Prior to the council meeting this evening, we are going to swear in our new police chief. What I'm going to do is we'll have the formal swearing-in ceremony and then we'll, the chief and the city manager and I will sign the papers. And then I want to go ahead and have the roll call and then give the opportunity for the council to say anything and the opportunity for the new chief to say anything. And we want to, I think the city manager, actually, the first thing is the city manager, I believe, wants to do, wants to introduce him to the community. Is that the right order? So I think we'll go ahead and begin with the swearing-in ceremony. I think we will have the city manager join us. And I can't do it without my crib sheet, sorry. I see you've done this before, chief. You're all set. If you could repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Ronald A. Rucucci.
Do affirm, under penalties of perjury...
Do affirm, under penalties of perjury...
That I will faithfully perform those duties...
Will faithfully perform those duties...
Assign to me...
Assign to me...
As chief of police...
As chief of police...
For the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland.
For the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
And of the state of Maryland.
And of the state of Maryland.
That I will obey...
That I will obey...
The commands of my superiors...
Commands of my superiors...
And abide by all the rules...
And abide by all the rules...
Policies and procedures...
Policies and procedures...
Of the police department.
Of the police department.
That without prejudice or partiality...
Without prejudice or partiality...
I will perform my duties...
I will perform my duties...
And enforce all laws...
And will enforce all laws...
Within the city of Tacoma Park...
Within the city of Tacoma Park.
And as I may otherwise have jurisdiction.
And as I may otherwise jurisdiction.
And that I hereby acknowledge and accept...
And I hereby acknowledge and accept...
This appointment...
This appointment.
As a public trust...
As a public trust.
Requiring honesty and diligence.
Requiring honesty and diligence.
Well, congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
We should probably do one with any other members of the council that wish to join us. Okay, would you like to, other members of the council? I mean, we're gonna have some...
We're gonna say no.
And then I'll... We've got to have something to do with photographs.
Can everybody come together?
Barb, why don't you come over on the other side? This is like the wedding photograph. Inside, outside.
That I can do. This is the man that... This is one, hold that please. One more. This is two. One more, I lied, I'm sorry.
Write that down.
Thank you. And I shall... I also would like to note that we have here, for me to give to the chief, a recognition from the Maryland House of Delegates. It's a House resolution, be it hereby known to all, that the House of Delegates of Maryland offers its sincere, socratic congratulations to Ronald A. Rucucci in recognition of your service to the law enforcement community and selection as chief of police of the city of Tacoma Park. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on this 20th day of February 2007. And it was sponsored by Delegate Sheila Hickson, who represents the 20th district that we're in. So I want to give you this also. And then we also have to sign the paperwork. and we'll allow you to say anything you might want to say. All right, I call this meeting, the Tacoma Park City Council, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Alton Lane.
I'm present.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Stepper.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Barry will be joining us in about an hour or so. He let us know that he was gonna be unable to be here at the beginning of the meeting. I want to turn this over to the city manager, who is going to introduce our new chief of police.
It is with great excitement this evening that I have the opportunity to formally introduce Chief Ronald Rucucci to the Tacoma Park residents and other members of our community. I think you will find him, as I did throughout the selection process, to be very customer-service-oriented, with a very strong interest in community-oriented policing. He brings a wealth of law enforcement experience to Tacoma Park, and I can honestly say, he has literally hit the ground running. From the time he was appointed, he has been in contact with me and with Captain Ed Corsi, asking for information, talking to the staff, and I've been incredibly impressed with that. And he's had a very, very busy day. But I look forward for everyone having the chance to spend a little bit more time with Chief Rucucci and getting to know him as I have the past couple months. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief and let him make any comments he would like. And I know he's got members of his family and some other longtime friends in the audience this evening.
You can either use the podium, chief, or you can use the table here, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Madam City Manager, members of the city council, members of the Tacoma Park Police Department, my family that's here tonight, my friends from my former job, Front Royal Police Department, Deputy Chief Tracy from Montgomery County, who I worked with for many years and have stayed in touch with and will be utilizing as a source of working together in the future, Chief Ron Williamson from Front Royal, I appreciate you being here tonight, Officer Kerry Klein from Leesburg, some of the many people that I've met along the way. And it's a part of what I think I'm about in establishing partnerships and relationships. I can't tell you how excited I am to be here tonight. I walked away 18 months ago from being the chief in Front Royal, and I left on good terms, and I thought I was ready to retire. Well, that lasted about eight weeks, and I got back into school security. And as part of school security, I had to get, they made a mistake and sent me back to getting certified, which put me through a rookie school and taking a state exam. And then I realized that I wasn't ready to retire yet. And I passed this back in May. And I said I would wait for the right opportunity. And the Lord works in strange ways. A lot of things happened in my family in the last several months that would make it better to be up here right now. But then I saw this job advertisement come out for Tacoma Park, and I was impressed with the way it had been written, and I thought, maybe they're talking to me. I'd been away from the county for 11 years. I started in the process, and as the process went on, and I have to compliment you all in the process, I've been in several processes, you can obviously guess by now, and this was the most professional process I've been in. And I'm not just saying this, but it just was done professionally. They made us work hard. The members of the interview committee weren't soft on you. They asked tough questions. I feel like they heard everything I could tell them about myself and about my philosophy of policing, and I think it was a great process, and I commend you all for the process that Ms. Matthews ran us through. It was excellent. I'm here because I think I can take this department to the next level. This is a good department. My last two jobs, there were some things that need, there were issues, and I had to address, it was more of a fix-it. Every department has problems. This one is not one that's in trouble. This is a department that has a lot of enthusiastic, energetic police officers and civilian employees who want to make this department better. I know about the community of Tacoma Park, working in Montgomery County for years, it's an activist community. That's a challenge, to meet our citizens' demands, to work with our citizens. Community policing is not a specialized unit, it's a philosophy. And I hope to develop a partnership with our community, with our department, so that we can better serve our community. There are many challenges today facing us. Coming in, I know that there's been a series of robberies here in the city, which Captain and Barb kept me informed on. I realize we have some grants that work out on the DC line, PG line, and I've been briefed on that, and I've been meeting with people already today on that. I want to work to improve our relationships with our police departments, Montgomery County, Prince George's, Metropolitan PD, Transit, Hyattsville. I think I do bring some experience in working with those departments in the past, and I don't see any reason why we can't do it in the future, and to take it to a higher level. Because the cooperation, we as a department can't do it alone. We need the community, we need your support, and we need everyone working together. One of the things you learn when you've been in policing as many years as I have, can't do it alone, and it's not one department against the world, it's everyone working together. I hope that we can bring the department and the community closer. I think we have a good relationship, but I think it can be better. I want us to improve the service we provide to the community. I know we can't be everything to everyone, and I never make that promise, but we can listen, we can talk, and we work for solutions. And my promise to you is my office door is always open, my phone is there, I want the community to call me, I want to meet the community, we'll be meeting with a lot of different groups over the next few weeks. We're here, we want to hear what they have to say, and we want to work with them. We're gonna look at the department and see what we can do to improve the way we're operating now. We can always be more efficient and save the taxpayer money, and we always look for things like that. The bottom line is, I can't tell you how happy I'm to be here. The welcome I have received today and over the last couple of days has been phenomenal, and I appreciate that, and thank you all individually, and to thank the community that's here tonight. I want to thank my supporters from Front Royal that have come up here, and especially my family, who's put up with a lot of years, especially my son, to see me go from one job to the next and continually on the move. But I think he knows I'm happy to be back where I am, and I think that's where I belong. And I love running the police department, and I love working with community. And I think we have a great opportunity here to take Tacoma Park to the next level. So my promise to you is to work hard, to work long hours, and to provide the service that you expect. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, thank you very much for those comments, we very much appreciate it. Is there anyone in particular you'd like to introduce, like introduce your family or folks that are here?
My brother Tom, my son Brad, my grandson, that cute little red head from the middle there.
Who's feeling shy this evening?
My son's wife, Michelle. The Front Royal contingent, stand up.
Well, welcome to you all, we're very glad to have you here.
And the members of our department here, I really appreciate them being up here tonight also.
Well, I think it says a lot about you, chief, that they were willing to come out here to celebrate your swearing-in in the Tacoma Park Police Department. I have to say also that since your appointment was announced, I've run into a number of members of the Montgomery County Police Department who have said to me, you made a good choice. So I know that we're already well ahead in terms of you're forging a good relationship with that department too, and that we're very, very pleased to have you. We're gonna move on, as we do in most of our meetings, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is council comments. And I'd like to just start off the council comments with a couple of comments of my own. I was out of town over the long weekend. I'll let, I'll give people a minute to move out of the room. We were glad to see you all. I had an opportunity to get out of town over the long weekend, which I like to do every so often, to sort of, gives me an opportunity to come back with a sense of perspective. And there's a couple of things that I would just like to share, just sort of thinking about the experience and the discussion that we're having about the possibility of a gym. And the first one is that I really look forward to the discussions. One of the good things about Tacoma Park is that everybody is so interested in what goes on in the community. But I hope that as we get into the discussions, we remember that this is not a battle, this is a community discussion. And I hope that people will remember, in the way that they present information and the way that they offer their opinions, to be respectful of the other side. I don't think that there is a wrong and a right on this, I think that the people who have engaged in the discussion are doing so out of commitment and interest and caring about their community. And I hope we can do this in a way that respects the people whose opinions may be different than ours, and that we can think of this as an opportunity to forge something that is a better outcome than any one of us could come up with on our own. So that's the first thing that I wanted to say. And the second thing is that I've been talking to the staff about the public participation piece of this, and I think we made a very good start. I very much appreciate the comments that members of the council made about pulling this information together and sort of organizing it in a way that is accessible to people. And I'm happy to do my part, I did some time ago and will do again, try and pull together some of the newsletter articles that were written contemporaneously with some of the earlier discussions about the community center, sort of give people a sense of sort of the history and where this came from. But I also think that this, one way to gather the opinions of the community in a very thorough way would be to tack this onto the survey. Now, as you know, the staff has been working on the survey that the council committed to for some time, although I don't, I think it's sort of gotten pushed behind some other priorities. But I spoke to the city manager, and apparently for a reasonable price, we can put an insert on a particular topic into sort of the general overall satisfaction surveys. And I think that might be a good way to get community opinion from all parts of the community. And then if we're able to get a sample size so that we could get opinions by ward, it would give the members of the council the opportunity to see what their wards felt also. And I think that would be a good step to give us some sense of how the community approaches this. And I very much appreciate all the input from the people who've sent emails and letters and have called and offered their opinions. And I think that going out and making sure that we hear from everyone would give us a broader base of ideas from which to proceed. And the other thing, as I've said to everybody who's contacted me, this is just the beginning of the discussions. No decisions have been made, we wouldn't make decisions without community input, and there will be a lot of additional opportunities for people to weigh in before a decision is made. So I'm going to suggest that we have a discussion specifically on how we do this next step and what's included in it. And I will schedule that on the council agenda in the next week or so. Are there any other council comments?
There was a green building conference this weekend, and it was here at the community center, and I attended, and it was put on by our planning, housing and community development department, and the rec department, and Honesty was one of our sponsors. And I would just like to say, it was a fabulous, fabulous event. In my day job, which I'm not supposed to mention, I worked on a green building conference this last, this past summer in Seattle, and it went very well, it was limited to Indian tribes. And I kind of expected maybe something the same when I got here, and I was so impressed with the whole, just everything, the whole package, how it was put together, all of the speakers that we had, the numbers of Tacoma Park residents who came. I thought the staff did an excellent job of targeting the presentations to Tacoma Park homeowners. A lot of times you go to green building, it's about how, if you had a pristine piece of land out in the middle of the forest, you might build it for solar accessibility. And this was really about how we could use green technology, energy efficiency technology to improve our environment right here in Tacoma Park. And I just want to say that that was great, so thank you so much. Public Works, I talked to the Public Works Director about the roads. We got great road clearing again in the first round, got a path going through every street. But I got some calls from people who said that, you know, they didn't get their second round, or they weren't able to get more than just the one lane of road that was cleared. And I talked to the Public Works Director, and what she said was that a lot of the areas around here experienced that, and what was happening was that it, everything froze, basically. After they got the first pass, everything froze, and they actually couldn't get down below the freezing level, and that was why some people didn't get, you know, secondary road clearing, or people going back through with the plows and making the roads a little bit wider, just because everything was pretty much frozen rock solid, so. I have received more gym comments, and I want to thank everybody for their comments, and encourage you to continue sending more comments. I'm still getting more comments from people who are opposed to building a gym than I am, people who are supportive of it, but in this last round, I did get an increase in the number of people who were supportive of building a gym. And no matter where you stand on the issue, I really encourage you to weigh in, send a copy to me, and send a copy to jim@, it's G-Y-M, at tacoma.gov.org, or to Suzanne Ledlow. This is the last week for traffic calming requests, and I've spoken to several people in the ward, and it doesn't matter whether they're in Long Branch, Sligo, Saskia, or Forest Park, or Tacoma Woods, they all say the same thing, the cause of their traffic calming is the Tacoma Junction. So it's not in our ward, but I hope that it rises to the top of the list, because I think it's the source of a lot of the cut-through misery. And since I've been on the council, the city manager has been doing these very detailed reports on the community center, which have been great. I personally have a lot of confidence in how the community center is going, and one of the things that I'm finding I don't have as much information on is about criminal activity in the city. And so what's been happening is constituents have been alerting me to things that have been happening and asking me questions about it, and I don't really have any information. And I was hoping that we could come up with a way to get more information about what's happening and where, and more details for people, because they really want to know. They've heard that there was another robbery in downtown, but they don't know who it was or how it happened, and people really want that information, and I don't have it to share with them.
Certainly, I'd be happy to talk to you, Councilmember Clay, and any other member of the council, about what you would like. There are obviously Tacoma Park crime blotter that goes out. I know that when the most recent incident happened, I believe the public information officer for the police department happened to be out of town on leave. One of the things that I talked to the police department about today, and it's always sort of a balancing act, is trying to be responsive to the community's desire for information and being sensitive to the individual who was a victim. And typically, we will give some information in terms of what block an incident may have occurred in, but as a general rule, and out of respect to the victim, unless they want their name publicized or their business location publicized, that is generally not something that we put out. The most recent incident that you're referring to, I believe our victim's assistance coordinator did put some information out, and obviously, in light of her job, she particularly is sensitive to giving out what she may deem to be private information. It's a little bit easier when the public information officer happens to be in town, and there's someone that she can kind of coordinate with and do that. But I certainly encourage any council member, if you have any specific ideas that you'd like us to implement, you can either talk to me or certainly talk to Chief Rucucci.
I would also like to commend the city for the green conference. I thought it was a terrific event, and I'd love to see it institutionalized as an annual resource for the city, both community residents, as well as a sign of leadership on environmental issues for the region. I found it very useful for myself and my family as a homeowner. I think also it sets the bar where it should be for many people who are looking to improve their properties in this area. Couple of issues that I wanted to bring up with the city manager, one is about sidewalk clearing. We are seeing that people are not clearing the whole width of their sidewalk, they're clearing a very small path, and given the conditions where the snow froze, it's been difficult because it wasn't cleared within the timeframe that it should have been cleared in for people to pass safely on the sidewalks. The second issue is that driveways are often being blocked by cars that are pulled up onto the patch where people should be able to walk along the sidewalk and during snowy conditions, it's especially difficult. So what I'd like to suggest is that there be intensive education, both through newsletters and warning letters to residents. And once the city manager feels that that education has saturated the neighborhoods, then I would think citations would be the next appropriate measure for enforcement. I've received numerous complaints about the sidewalks, and I think that in previous years, we have been more attentive to putting out warning letters and maybe even citing people, so I want to make sure that we keep our standards high. The police chief started on an auspicious day, and I wanted to bring this to the attention of the council. In Word 1, there was a breaking, what do you call it, a robbery in progress. I'm sorry, I don't know the correct terminology, but there was something underway on Park Avenue, and a homeowner observed it at their neighbor's house, called the police, the police surrounded the location and arrested the person. I'm very pleased that we have this kind of responsiveness and excellence in our police department today, and I anticipate that Chief Rucucci will just continue that into the future. I noticed Brad Stewart is here, the provost of Montgomery College, and I want to make sure that he and the police chief are introduced to each other and have a close relationship, given the stakeholders that college officials are, and our residents' interest in keeping our neighborhood safe, and given Dr. Stewart's background in this area. Lastly, I will say about the, about the community center, that what I've heard over the last week is increased desire for accountability. And I don't know when the previous contract with JF Knot will be completely off the table. I'm looking forward to that day very much, as I'm sure the city manager is. But at that time, I believe it's important for the city council to address lessons learned from the experience we had with phase one of the community center construction. It has been very helpful to the council to receive weekly detailed reports from the city manager about the community center construction and resolution of pending issues. However, it has not trickled down, as it were, to residents, and I believe we need to continue letting them know what we now understand about ways to improve our methods and ways that we're aware that any future project would be undertaken in a responsible way. I do not believe that at this time, the council has consensus on going forward with the gym. I think there's been a call from the community to... I think there's been a call from the community to take this path very carefully, and maybe even slowly. So, I hope that the city government respects that call, and that we can satisfy people's desires for answers before we plunge forward with additional projects. Thank you.
I just want to echo the comments of the other councilmembers concerning the Green Conference, Green Building Conference this weekend. I could only say, for a couple of hours, it was packed with information, it was packed with people, it was well-run. The brochure itself was easy to use. The whole thing was really just a delight, as others have said. And I also echo the comment of thinking about other things we can do similar to this, where we essentially leverage the very knowledgeable, talented people in Tacoma Park, to bring them together, so we can learn from each other. I mean, I had hall conversations, professional presentations, all level of information, and all of it's just packed with useful stuff.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. If I can just say briefly on the Green Building Conference, that I certainly would have been there if I had been in town, but as I had noted last week, I was out of town for a long weekend for the memorial service for my partner's stepfather. So, I've been, as the mayor was, out of town, and kind of had a chance to step back and get a little perspective on things. One of the things that's been brought up already, that I'd just like to comment briefly on, is there was the commercial burglary in the 7300 block of Carroll, and I've had a number of comments from folks who were having difficulty kind of ascertaining what had happened. And in fact, some of those people talked to some of the business owners in that block, and the business owners were not aware of the fact that it had happened at all, and didn't know where it had occurred. And in the process of delving into that, people were kind of getting back to the Alert Tacoma message that had gone out from the department, and realizing that they thought they were on the Alert Tacoma list, and had, in fact, had not gotten that alert. And I said, "Well, gee, I think I signed up for that, let me check." And I went back, and the log for alerts to me were three in July of last year, and a test in January of this year, but nothing else. So, it may in fact be that something in that signup procedure, and something in that dissemination of information, has had a technological glitch, and people aren't getting the information that they need. And then, on sidewalk clearing, I had a number of communications with folks who wanted to make sure that we did enforce the law, and I know that there were a number of residents who did get cited, and I know that staff heard from them as well. The disturbing thing to me was that, in getting some information back from staff, I have the impression, I'm not sure that I'm totally correct, but I think the council may want to get a briefing on this, that in order for the citation to be upheld, the condition still needs to exist at the time that the city takes the person to court, and a court appearance is made. If the blockage of the sidewalk by the snow and the ice is not still actually there, when we go to court, they throw it out. So, I think we essentially have unenforceable ordinance, and I'm appalled by that. And it may just be that that's a problem with the courts, but I think we need to understand that. If you can comment briefly.
No, I think Councilmember Williams has sort of summed up the situation accurately. When we have these kind of conditions, the staff does issue warnings, and the hope is that that will essentially kind of jolt the property owner into compliance. In response to an issue I think Councilmember Austin Lane raised, typically during the, just prior to the winter season, we try to use the city newsletter and other things to communicate what the city's laws are in terms of keeping your sidewalk clear. What our experience has been, if we get to the point that we actually issue, rather than just a warning, an actual citation, that when that moves forward through the court system, that the result has often been before the judge, that unless the condition still exists, at the time the judge actually hears the case, the property owner comes forward, says the condition no longer exists, and the judge says, "Well, then, there's really not an issue before the court," and essentially, there's no fine or any penalty. And obviously, by the time you actually issue a warning, and then you get to court 30 to 45 days later, it's obviously going to have been abated, just by nature's course typically. So, that does create some difficulties, quite frankly, in our ability to really assign a penalty to noncompliance with the ordinance.
So, I think we might just want to revisit this issue, and see if there might be a better way to get at the crux of the problem, which is a public safety issue for people walking on sidewalks, and the best way to get the sidewalks cleared in a timely fashion, and not be relying on something that we thought might be effective. And it strikes me that other people, other jurisdictions have battled with this. A lot of places have this ordinance. There was quite the discussion in Montgomery County just a few years ago about whether the county should have such an ordinance or not, whether it should be enforced or not. And if people realize the end result of those kinds of ordinances ending up in court the way it appears that they end up, there's been a lot of heat put to this argument that did not go toward the public safety goal of melting that ice and snow. And then, I have one more thing, which is that I put together the thoughts that I've had about a gym, in lieu of many comments I've received from constituents, and our discussions last week. And I've actually written my thoughts out, and if you'll bear with me, I'd like to read them. "The debate over the gym seems to be generating more heat than light. Briefly, I'd like to try to put the debate into context. It's important to remember that when we started the process of planning for a community center, that the council asked for and received an enormous amount of public input. More than 500 people responded to a survey. There were three town meetings, and at least 150 people attended each one. There were four citizen committees that held monthly meetings for more than a year. Later, for each critical vote that the council took, there were public hearings. Throughout this process, there was always strong public support for a gym to be included as part of the community center. And yes, we also heard from people who were against all or part of the project at each step of the way. In all votes that the city council has taken involving a gym, the majority of the council has always voted in favor of a gym. That was true, again, at the beginning of this council term, we agreed to make the gym one of our top five priorities. My vision for the community center is that it will serve many needs. We've included public computers, rooms for tutoring, places to create art and exhibit art, a refuge for latchkey kids, rooms for civic meetings, a dance room, a teen room, a game room. We heard from staff two weeks ago that the use of the building is quite high, and I can see that every time I enter the building. We'd like to renovate this room so it can be used more effectively for theater, and dances, and concerts. Adding a gym would fulfill another need, a place for very young children to play during the day, a place for seniors to exercise, a place for kids to blow off steam after school, a place for organized sports and for pickup games, a place for dances. If we put in the right flooring, there could be roller skating and floor hockey. We could hold large civic events in a gym. A gym would replace the three gyms that the city has lost since the early '70s, in the park at the end of Darwin and Grant Avenues, where the proposed skate park will go, in the park across from Montgomery College at Philadelphia and Chicago Avenues, and in the basement of the fire station. I believe that a gym would serve many worthwhile purposes, and I hope that at some point, we'll be able to build a gym. Unfortunately, now is not that time. When we envisioned the community center, the architects gave us a master plan for a complete package that they said would be good for 15 years. We've tried to keep that process going and not let it lapse, but if the cost of a gym is going to be $8 million or $9 million, it's too much. Even $6 million is more than we can afford right now. Currently, we have $1.5 million in hand or pledged. We're hoping for another grant in the current budget cycle from the state, and perhaps from the county, but even in the best-case scenario, the city would still be forced to take out a large bond if we were to try and proceed this year. So, where do we go from here? I continue to support a gym, but I can't support taking on a large debt at this time, and I can't support going forward, given the lack of consensus around building a gym. I thought we had consensus about this for the last several years, but the lengthy construction process for Phases 1 and 2 of the community center, and the large increases in costs, have eroded public trust in our ability to oversee and manage the construction. I know that we've learned a lot, and that we're much better prepared for managing any additional construction, but I recognize that many of our residents aren't so sure. I think we can provide a clear, concise report on where things stand, and on lessons learned, such as beware of value engineering, as those phases are completed shortly. I also think that we need to pull together and make available, as part of this report, all of the various elements that have been compiled that make the case for the gym, so that in future, those who may not have been around for this process will not be forced to reconstruct the information. An example of an outline for a report would be the history of the planning for the project, how the money was spent, and lessons learned. We also need to move forward with the survey of residents that we authorized more than a year ago, so that we can find out a baseline of information about what services our residents value, and how well we do at providing those services. Washington Adventist Hospital has pledged $750,000 toward improving the health of city residents. We can talk with the hospital about other ways to use their generous pledge. We can talk with Montgomery College and Columbia Union College about their facilities, and how we might gain access to them. City taxpayers pay $300,000 each year in recreation taxes to the county, for which we receive few, if any, services. The new county executive is convening a task force to reevaluate tax rebates at our request. Tacoma Park will have a representative on that panel, and we will be working hard to gain additional fair rebates, not only for recreation services, but for other duplicate services as well. The Tasty Committee's report thoroughly documented all the possibilities. Any outcomes from this process could take at least a year, with any implementation not ready until, at the earliest, the budget's going into effect on July 1, 2008. We need to concentrate our efforts in this area, so that our structural deficit, like the state of Maryland's, is addressed in a long-term fashion. Many of my constituents, who are generally in favor of building a gym, have expressed their reluctance to go forward at this time, given our fiscal situation, and given the other needs that must be addressed, like public safety. I also think it's hard for people to imagine being able to afford to continue to live here, given the large increases in the assessed value of our homes that we've all received in the last few months. Those assessments are capped for most of us at 10% increases each year, and the taxes we'll pay will only be set once this council determines a tax rate during our upcoming budget discussions. But the size of the assessment increases, both recently and three years ago, make people concerned about long-term affordability. So, I propose that we back off our efforts to redesign and build a gym at this time, that we go forward with at least the efforts that I've outlined here. We need to withdraw our requests for funding from the state and from the county. We need to work with the hospital and the two colleges to increase the availability of opportunities for improving our physical and mental health. We need to pursue fair rebates from the county to address our fiscal health. We need to put together a comprehensive report on the community center so far, and we need to go forward with the community survey. That's the minimum that we need to do. I hope my colleagues on the council will join me in those requests.
As I said, I am planning to schedule a discussion of this issue within the next week or two.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I thank you, Councilmember Williams, for putting together those thoughts and sharing that with us. I have spent the week concerned that with us moving forward with our request to the state, that we haven't done our homework and prepared ourselves for that, so I'm glad you've put that back on the table, and look forward to that discussion. And I also want the community to know that I share your enthusiasm for a gym, and I think that it's a matter of really going through an organized process to see whether it does make sense or not at this point in time. On a lighter note, snow removal doesn't seem... Well, I guess, I heard what the judges are saying, I just wish that they were of the same attitude in traffic court, that you only have to be doing it when you reach the courtroom. I did want to mention on snow removal, that I was really pleased with the work the Public Works Department did this year on snow removal. I thought that this snowstorm was... I received the fewest complaints of any recent year with the snow removal, and I know that it had the complicating factor of the freezing rain making the continued removal difficult. There was one issue that I did want to call to your attention, Ms. Matthews, and that is in front of the single-family house next door to the fire department, because the homeowner is no longer residing there, and it, I believe, is now, I'm not sure if it is county property yet, or if it's city property, or who owns it, but no one seems to think it's theirs, because it remained unshovelled. So, if we could kind of resolve that, it would be nice. I'm really disappointed after hearing about the Green Conference, the Green Building Conference that we had here. I knew that it was coming, and was disappointed. I was out of town, Joyce and I were out of town for the conference, after hearing all the feedback tonight. Sadens me that I wasn't there, and I look forward to receiving a copy of the handouts, so I can at least share in what took place that day. Other than that, I had other things on my list, but we've spent a long time on council comments, so I'll share those with you another week.
Okay. Thank you to my colleagues. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time set aside in the agenda for comments on items that are not on our special session agenda this evening. If you have comments on work session items, or anything else you'd like to bring for the council, now would be the time. I'd ask when you come forward that you identify yourself, and if you would, keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. First thing I'd like to do is welcome in my new police chief. And I'd like to ask him, now he's chief of police, if they would continue to pay more attention to the drugs and the gangs in our neighborhood along Maple Avenue, and to keep a shop eye out for, you know, streetlights that are burned out, and also for, you know, gangs of people that hang out in the front of these stores down there, and seem to be intimidating some of the elderly residents and the handicapped in our area, that they could keep an eye out for that. And also, on the gym, I was thinking, when we have to bring it before the public, and we get the public's opinion on this, considering it seems to be, some places seem to be not wanting it, some people tend to be wanting it, and plus, the price tag seems to be awful high. If we could maybe put it on the November ballot, and let the voters decide what the city wants, let the city decide. Because I think we ought to also be aware, too, that the hospital is closing, and that's going to be a lot of tax revenue lost. If the hospital closes, will Columbia Union College eventually take up their tail and leave too? If that ever happens, and we've already spent $9 million on a gym, or $6 million, or whatever, we're going to wish to devil we had that $6 or $9 million back in our pockets, because we're not going to be able to afford to even take care of our own city, our own people. We've got to really think, you know, it would be really nice to have a gym, but couldn't we renovate a gym at one of the colleges in exchange for the city's use of it? You know, couldn't we do that? And still have the same high-quality exercise programs for our kids? And we need to have a program to put in a gym before we ask the state, because it's going to be embarrassing if we don't have anything, we just build this big white element, and we can't do anything with it, we spent all our money, and the hospital is closing, and we're losing a lot of revenue. Is that fair to us, the taxpayers, to put that on top of losing the hospital? You know, Washington Adventist, as we know, is going to be leaving. We really got to be fully aware of this, before we place a large amount of money for the gym. You know, we've got to see what we can do. We've got to maybe put it on the November ballot, and let the voters decide. I'm thinking that might be the better way to do it. You know, put all the facts out before the public, let them know about the hospital closing, let them know about other alternatives, and then put the situation on the November ballot. Thanks very much for letting me share. And I think we'd be a little more, our consciences would be clearer if we let the people of Tacoma Park decide on the ballot, whether we build a new gym, or whether we renovate one. My idea would be to renovate one, save a lot of money, because we are going to wish to devil we had that money in our pocket someday. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, Pat. I appreciate your comments, but I think it should be noted that both the hospital and the college are nonprofits, and they don't actually pay property taxes to the city. So, I would like to see the hospital stay, but not for the revenue it generates.
No, the jobs, people are going to be moved, the jobs are going to be taxed, and they're going to be moving too.
Andy Kellerman, 18 Philadelphia Avenue. You had your comments about snow clearing and ice clearing, and it occurred to me that there's an issue that you may want to take up, or a clarification. There are a number... I'm a walker, so there's a number of places in the city where a sidewalk needs... There are a number, I'm a walker, so there's a number of places in the city where a sidewalk needs a continuation on the other side, and there's a sidewalk there, but the cut has not been made to the roadway to make that so that you can go and continue on on the other side of the sidewalk, other side of the street. Did I paint that picture, you understand? So who is responsible for making that cut in the snow? You know, that's on the verge, that's not really the sidewalk. And there are some egregious spots where there's, you know, wide areas of snow and ice, so that you have to wander off and try to find a, some other way of getting on to the other side so that then you can continue walking. So when you go back to look at your ordinance, you may want to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on to the city manager's comments.
I'll try to keep this brief, as I know there's some individuals here for some agenda items. I did just want to call to the council's attention to the fact that the report of the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee is included in your packet outlining all the activities they did for calendar year 2006. As council may recall, this is one of your goals, was to have each of the committees report at least annually to the council in some fashion. Some other items I just wanted to mention very quickly, I think a number of the council members have commented on the Green Building Conference, which was very well-attended, and I appreciate the kind comments of the council. I did want to just take a brief moment just to thank some individuals in particular who played an integral role in that. Councilmember Clay kindly offered to basically do some introductions and welcome folks to the conference. I appreciate her taking time to do that. And certainly, as many of our staff efforts are, it's very much a collaboration, and it basically required a lot of interdepartmental cooperation. Certainly, in the Housing and Community Development Department, I would be remiss if I didn't note the efforts of Alana Blanchard and Martine Salmon. Other staff members from other city departments also played a pretty good supporting role in this. That would include everyone in the IT Department and our cable television, Richard French of the Recreation Department, and Willie Thompson from Public Works. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Clay for treating the staff to a, what was supposed to be a Valentine's Day treat last Wednesday. Unfortunately, with the inclement weather and a lot of the staff not making it in, that became a February 15 event. But basically, she brought in a chocolate fountain and cookies, cakes, fruit, and everything else, which was set up on the third-floor atrium lobby, and all the staff got to come and have dessert from about 1:30 to 3:00, not the entire time period, but at least to come and enjoy something. And I think about 50 folks came by, and everyone was very appreciative. Councilmember Clay, of your thoughtfulness in doing that for us. Wanted to call the council's attention to two items that were left at Sure Place this evening related to the proposed construction of a gym. One was a draft of a bondill fact sheet that was prepared by Suzanne Ludlow. Suzanne will be here later this evening to give the council a legislative report, and if there's any questions about the draft that was left at Sure Place this evening, I'm sure Suzanne would be happy to answer any questions you might have. The other thing that I provided you this evening was some information regarding the rental of gyms in the Montgomery County Public School System and how the city has utilized some of those gyms. In reading through the comments that were submitted relative to the gym construction, and certainly some of the questions that came up at the workshops, there seemed to be a lot of questions coming out of the community about how the city makes use of facilities already in the city or around our areas, and I thought this information might be helpful to the council. Certainly, as we move forward, if there's other information that the council would like staff to provide, please just let me know. But we will get this information up on the website, and hopefully that'll be responsive to some of the community's questions and concerns. The two last items I had is just to note that there was a revised rolling agenda that I think was left at Sure Place this evening by the city clerk's office. I would note that there were some changes to the agenda for February 26 that I just wanted to call the council's attention to. You may just want to take a close look at that. And last but not least, we will be closing early this Friday. We're having our semi-annual employee appreciation day, and kind of going off-site for some employee bonding and to give out our annual recognition awards to some of our staff. So the building will be closing just shortly before 11 o'clock on Friday. There will be some staff at the reception desk to basically at least take some key calls, but a lot of the staff will be attending this event. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. There are signs on the doors, and certainly there'll be notices on the website. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Thank you. I appreciate this detailed report on the use of the school gyms. I wonder if that is really addressing the same point that was on the first, I think, the first section of the mailer that was recently sent out to the community?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Simmons, I'm not sure I understand your question.
There was a section on there of why can't we use the local gyms, I think was the topic. And this basically addresses that issue in a longer...
Longer fashion, yeah. I think certainly there, understandably, there were some questions in the community about how we're using the gyms. So I think the memo was an attempt to kind of supplement some of the information in the mailer and provide a little bit more detail in terms of how we currently use each of the gyms and perhaps any type of impediments, just due to practical considerations that may limit our ability to use those facilities.
Okay, I appreciate that. And a couple weeks ago, I had asked Ms. Hayden for some information on the number of hours that we use, the local school gyms, over the last, I forget what I asked, for the last three months, or what we have scheduled for the next three months. And I haven't received that yet. I wonder if that's still on the drawing boards?
Yeah, I'll be happy to follow up with her. That is not included in the information I gave you this evening, so I'll follow up with her tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We are going to move on to our only special session item, which is the first reading of an ordinance approving a pilot agreement for Hampshire Towers. So we had a presentation and a discussion of this last week, and the information looks very similar.
Good evening. Representatives from CPDC weren't able to attend this evening due to scheduling conflict, but if you have any questions that come up this evening, you are here. Do you want to come up? You have before you this evening an ordinance, it's a two-reading ordinance. The second reading is scheduled for the 26th of February. As the mayor indicated, it's very similar to what we had originally discussed at the earlier work session on the 12th. The one thing I would like to point out is that, based on recommendation of our city attorney, we've updated the taxing information and making some assumptions that this year's tax rate will be in effect in 2007, which is when this pilot will actually go into effect. We've increased the financial impact. But it basically, it's a 22-year pilot or a 22-year abatement period that would be graduated over that 22 years. 100% abatement over the first 17 years, a 75% abatement the following three years, and in the last two years, it would be a 50% abatement of the taxes that are generated by that particular property. You may recall that we are anticipating the increase of the property, the assessed value of the property to increase following the completion of some badly needed renovations of the property, which will increase this assessment significantly. And then the other thing I wanted to note was that the county, as part of its financing of this property, will be abating its taxes at 100% during the entire term of their financing agreement, which is 40 years.
And then...
And if you have any specific questions, Shalinda is here.
But, I mean, you've talked about what the city is giving and what the city is getting is a 40-year commitment, which is an agreement that the organization's making, both with us and with the county, to provide 94% of the units affordable to people with less than 60% of the county's median income. So they're pledging affordable units for the next 40 years.
The pledge to the city is tied just to the pilot agreement, so there's a 20-year abatement period there. But the actual financing documents that you have with the county are for a much longer period of time, and those will come into play once the pilot has...
So you're saying that the agreement that we've got is for 22 years, but they've got a further agreement with the county for the remainder of the 40 years?
Correct.
Gotcha.
And the value of the abatement over that 40-year period, again, making some assumptions regarding the assessed value and the tax rate, is equal to about $1.3 million?
For the 22 years, right?
Excuse me, for the 22-year period.
Yes. Okay. Are there council questions or comments? We talked about this last year. Does someone want to move the ordinance?
So move?
It's been moved and seconded. I think we've talked about this before. Are there any public comments on the ordinance? It's a fairly large abatement for us, but it also has the effect of preserving the vast majority of the 216 units for 40 years as affordable housing, which is what we're getting out of it. And so it is a large, goes a long way towards the city's commitment in preserving affordable housing. Okay, seeing no public comments, this is the first reading of the ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance passes at first reading. The next item on the agenda, we're now moving to our first work session item, which is the discussion of the recommendations from the Montgomery College Neighbors Advisory Committee. And I note that we've got the chair and vice chair, as well as Dr. Brad Stewart, who's the provost of the Montgomery... You want to come up here also, and is the provost of this campus of Montgomery College? We have a resolution that was presented to the council by the officers of the committee. I know that Councilmember Austin Lane also has a revision of that that she would like to present, too.
Good evening, Mayor Porter. Thank you for this opportunity to be here, along with all the council members. I'm Richard Wheel, chairperson of the Montgomery College Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and to my left, Lorraine Pierceall, co-chairperson of the MAC committee. And to her left, Brad Stewart, provost of Montgomery College Tacoma Park Campus. Committee met on several occasions and discussed several items about continuing the good relationship we have with the college. We've worked with them in putting together, I think, a pretty good student services building, which is part of their master plan. They have a master plan that identifies several buildings that are going to be renovated, as well as new buildings to be built, infrastructure to be constructed or renovated. And so we put together a resolution with reference to their master plan and considering the expansion into downtown Silver Spring, acquiring properties in downtown Silver Spring as one of the items that they look at, as opposed to just staying on the campus with the expansion. And also supporting them in terms of budget for the renovation of the Commons Building, which is at the corner of Tacoma and New York Avenues. This was discussed back and forth with different members, in emails, put together a resolution, which I felt reflected what the committee felt about those items. I'm going to let Lorraine expand upon that a little more, and I understand that there's a resolution, some amendments that Joy Austin Lane has...
Just a slight reorganization of the...
Okay. So those are the two that we need to discuss, though?
Yeah.
Actually, I think there are some major issues with that resolution, but I just want to take the council back to what we were trying to do, the reason we're here, the resolution, as an outgrowth of the last meeting that we had, where the committee wanted to be able to advocate for the college to help them obtain funding for renovation of the Commons Building. And in doing so, we thought it was a good time to reiterate the issues concerning air-handling equipment and all of that, which the college is working with us on, and Brad can certainly speak to that. But we were told by Alana that because we are a city committee, we could not just go forward and do this and go to Annapolis without having a council resolution that would allow us to lobby or advocate in support on such an issue. The other major issue that we discussed at the last meeting was the need to begin investigation and dialogue with county and state officials. Our state officials are very creative and helpful, and they are willing to talk with us and begin a dialogue on how to solve future expansion problems. This is something that has been weighing on us for a long time. We are worried for the college, we are worried for our neighborhood, we don't want the college to become landlocked, and we see a distinct possibility that in the future, this will happen because of the way in which master plans are done. They look at enrollment figures that are given to the college by the state, and it's easy to keep putting that density on the existing property that they own, rather than start looking to expand beyond the existing footprint of the Tacoma Park campus. This is something we have talked to the college with as a friend and as a partner. They are aware that we are concerned about this, and we thought, as a committee, that because we have such terrific elected officials in place now, that we can benefit by their experience and their creativity in figuring out how to go about this. This is a long-term issue. It's not going to be this session that, you know, suddenly we're going to find a ton of money. I mean, obviously, it takes a long time for the college to move in such a direction. We understand that. We worked with them for the installation of the bridge, for example, which at one time seemed like a very formidable thing, that it would never happen. And over time, with the vision and moving it forward, we now have a bridge and we have off-site expansion onto Georgia Avenue. So what we are saying, we are seeing in the master plan, now some plans for some fairly large enlargement, expansion of the science and math building. And that began the process of, okay, so how do we resolve this? How do we come up with a solution for this cycle of constant need for density, which we know is, we support the college, we support their mission, we want them to educate people, and we don't want them to lose the option of acquiring property that is very intuitively obvious that they need and will need. And that could happen in the near future. So in order for us to begin a dialogue with our elected officials, who are willing to certainly begin a dialogue, just start talking about it, bring people together, let's brainstorm. How do we do this? What are ways to do this? We have to have a resolution to do this as a committee. And in fact, Sheila was willing to have a meeting with us together, but we can't do that without a resolution. So the outgrowth, just to, so you understand why you're seeing this resolution, the one that is in your packet, was very carefully crafted to reflect what we were discussing, particularly at that last meeting. And what we needed to do, what our understanding of what we needed to do was to just begin that dialogue. And I did get a copy of this resolution kind of late in the day, and in fact, very late in the day, just, you know...
Why don't we, I'll let Lorraine finish, and then I'll give you an...
Yeah.
You're talking about my resolution.
Well, I just, really what I want to say, because Joy mentioned that it was just a minor rewording, actually, I think it's much more than that.
What I'd like to present about this resolution is that I...
Can you...
Could I just, could I just...
No, no. I think Lorraine has the floor, I'm going to let her finish, and then you can say whatever you would like, okay?
Well, my understanding was Lorraine would present a resolution that she and committee members came up with.
And she has done that, yes. And she, and I want to let her...
And now I have the opportunity to present my resolution before it is critiqued. I think that's a fair approach for...
Could you, Lorraine, could you...
I want to make sure that...
Can you just sort of finish up your comment, and then let Joy present hers?
Okay.
And can you, would you do that?
I wanted to give you my impression of this resolution. I wanted to, to give you my impression of, of this resolution.
It hasn't been presented yet.
Why don't you, can you just give us a summary, and then I'll, I'll let Joy go ahead and present a resolution?
I don't think it reflects, the emphasis is wrong, it is, it is poorly worded and vague, it is misleading in places, and takes out committee concerns in many areas that I think need to be in here, and in so doing implies that our committee is basically saying, as a number-one part, that there be no further encroachment nor negative impact on the residential neighborhoods. I don't know where this came from, and our committee did not talk about further encroachment nor negative impact at that meeting. This does not reflect what we discussed, nor, I believe, as a committee, what we feel, we don't believe that there was negative, and has been, negative encroachment. As I look at this, this is structured, and again, very vaguely worded, but it is a very nimby kind of resolution. We are concerned about the college becoming landlocked. That is a major issue. It is not in this resolution, it's been taken out. Our, our concerns are not reflected adequately in here.
Okay, thank you. Joy?
I'd be happy to work with Lorraine to understand her comments about this. This is a resolution that I have edited from what the committee put together, and hopefully the, Lorraine can understand that this is a council resolution, not a committee resolution, that the committee is welcome to pass their own resolution. I'd be happy to work with her on this in the intervening time before this is brought forward to the council again.
I think that would be very helpful, to have the two of you work together, and perhaps you can come up with something that works with what the committee wants and, and addresses the concerns that Joy has. Not to put you in the middle of the discussion about resolutions, Dr. Stewart, but is there anything you would like to share with the council?
First of all, on behalf of the college, I'd like to say we very much value our relationship with McNAC. This is a new development that sort of coincided with my coming to the college about two years ago. And we enjoy the relationship and the chance for dialogue that we have between the neighbors, the committee, and the college. We think that, that that is the outgrowth of what began as a bit of a contentious process, or at least so unfold, with the original version of the Student Services Center on our campus, which I believe was described as a spaceship at one time.
It had wings, yes.
On our campus. I saw those original drawings in an archive. You got it right. And the end product that we have now is a much superior facility, which is used by our students from the time we unlock the doors in the morning until the time we lock them at night. There are several hundred students in the building almost every hour that we're open, making use of the computer labs, the classrooms, and their ability to get counseling and tutoring, et cetera. The resolution that Richard and Lorraine and I have been discussing is something that the college can live with. We're a little concerned once in a while about outside organizations having direct input into what we call our facilities' master plan, which we're currently updating. But we've had a very constructive dialogue about how to do that effectively, and so they carefully crafted a document we met last week, just before the ice storm hit. And they persuaded me that some of the concerns I had there were things that the college could live with. So that version of the resolution, I haven't had time to look at this one very much, is something that, that we can live with, and we'll continue the very good relationship between the college and McNAC, and by extension, the city of Tacoma Park. Thanks.
I appreciate that. I, I would just like to say that the, the council has supported the college, and I think the, the idea, I mean, Lorraine mentioned that as a formal city organization, they can't go forward to speak to legislators without basically working off a policy position that the council has agreed to. And I think that that would be a good thing. My understanding is that there is a interest in supporting your need for additional funding, but also asking if there could be some changes, some design changes made that would accommodate the neighborhood. And my, my, I won't speak for my colleagues, but that sounds to me like, if you, if you would be agreeable to that, it sounds like something that the council could support.
Yeah, the governor wasn't very nice to us. The college requested forty million dollars in capitals, state capital budget funds for projects across three of our campuses. The county executive has already agreed to that, and we're pretty sure that the county council will fund their half, their forty million dollars, which is half of what we need. But that, we got one point two million dollars, is all for all three campuses in Governor O'Malley's recommendation for community college funding. And so we are obviously turning to our friends and our neighbors to help advocate for that. What's missing from the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus allocation is three point one million dollars to finish the renovation of the old Student Services Building that we call the Commons, to transform it into a classroom facility and a conference auditorium facility as well there, to better serve our students. Lorraine is very rightly concerned about the fact that we're worried about being landlocked. By 2012, our enrollments are projected to grow from fifty-six hundred students this fall to seventy-two hundred students in five years. We, in spite of the Tacoma Park expansion, which will give us four new buildings and some renovated facilities as well, are still facing almost fifty thousand square feet, net-assignable square feet space deficit for our students. And so we're, we're pinched. And actually, we're in better shape than the other two campuses. The Rockville Campus is really landlocked, and the Germantown Campus has access issues as well. And so we need all the help we get, and we're willing to talk to everybody about our renovation plans for our science facility and our library. They now call those Learning Resource Centers. I'm not allowed to say library anymore in the, in the master plan. So we're willing to talk about all of those kinds of things, and we think in this resolution that they've developed a pretty good process for us to do that.
I, I should note that when I was in Annapolis for the mayor's conference, I did get an opportunity to talk to Delegate Sheila Hickson, and it, you know, we didn't get a chance to talk about this issue extensively, but it did seem to me she was interested in working with the college on coming up with, you know, something that would help with some of the issues that you outlined in terms of the renovation and, and providing an opportunity in the future for the college to acquire more land.
Yeah.
That did seem to be something that she had been thinking about. Any additional comments?
I just want to assure that Dr. Stewart understands, we are, as a council, very supportive of the college being in our community. And my intention with, in my view, clarifying the message of this resolution was really just to make a clear statement about what the city council would authorize the committee to discuss with college officials, as well as funding officials. And I felt that some changes were needed for that reason. So as I said, I'm happy to work with Lorraine, I have talked with other members of the committee, and we will make sure that we get to a final resolution that everyone can live with.
I, could I speak to this for a moment? And I'm really going to, this resolution was really very carefully crafted. We have Sheila Hickson, who is, who is ready to meet with us, and I hate to waste that time, to not take her up on it, because she's going to be very busy. And we're only, you know, I'm so, it's so great we have Sheila, and we can't waste time, because it's going to take a long time to do this. We had hoped we would be able to have a meeting in February even, but it looks like it'll be in, maybe in March. But I guess what I'm saying is, I'm wondering, because this resolution does reflect what was discussed at our meeting, and what we are trying to do, I am wondering if the council can, can, why do we have to postpone this? Can't we, can we not, can you not go forward with the resolution that's in your packet?
We're not voting tonight, if that's what you're asking.
The, the, this is the work session discussion on the resolution, and we, and I've got it scheduled at this point for next week for the final voting on it.
Oh, good. Oh, thank you.
So it wouldn't be a question of delaying it to give the two of you a chance to sit down and, and talk about how the wording might go.
Great.
Generally, on a policy issue like this, the council likes to have an opportunity to hear from people in there. If there's, then that gives us a chance, if the council has any further questions, to have a week to think about things, or ask additional questions, or whatever, before it comes up for a vote, as we did with the previous issue on the pilot project for the Hampshire Towers.
Great.
So I've got it scheduled for, I'm pretty sure I've got it scheduled for next week. Jesse and I were sort of going back and forth, but I think it's, yes, it is there, next week.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're. Do any other members of the council have any questions?
No, we're not voting yet.
Well, this is your chance to ask questions. I mean, by the time I come up to the vote, you.
You can still ask questions then.
Okay, I'd like to ask this gentleman right here. So, let me know if I have it, I have it right. So the college is in both Tacoma Park and Silver Spring, and is directly adjacent to our historic district. And you can't expand anymore into Silver Spring because you don't have the money, and you think in the long term, the real estate prices there are going to price you out of the market. And right now, we have noise issues and concerns, and you're making modifications and responding to those, right?
Yeah.
Is that right so far? So the difference between these two ordinances is in the strength of the wording. This ordinance says what I think probably, this isn't my word, this is Joy's word, but what I think probably is the sentiment of the community, that, that significant noise or high-density abutting that historic district would be intolerable for the folks who live there. And this one is, why is this one more palatable to you?
This one is sort of a general description of how our relationship currently exists and will move forward. The noise issue is a very small and specific one, confined to one building, and our modern construction standards that we use now will address those issues. The noise that, and I'm unaware that anybody has directly ever complained to me in two years about the air handling units on top of the Commons Building. We've attempted to maintain those so that they don't make very much noise, and he lives right across the street, and he hasn't complained much about it.
I'm deaf and one ear can't hear a thing. Let me just say, Councilmember, also if I may, we've been working with the college hand-in-hand. A good example is the Student Services Building, and setting the loading dock off into Fenton Street, so it wasn't anywhere near the residential, and setting the equipment back again on by Fenton Street, and having mechanical screening. This is something that, in my experience, the, the college has worked very well with us and responded to us in terms of elevation differences, materials, plantings. And I, I think maybe one of the things that needs to be pointed out here, and I appreciate Councilmember Joy Austin Lane's, you know, putting this together, but I didn't see this till tonight. So, so, and Brad and Lorraine didn't see it till tonight. So that's, that's part of the issue here, I think, why there's some just initial sort of, okay, well, the good news here is, obviously, we will work together as we have before and just talk this over and talk it through, but we, I, I didn't know this was coming.
I just put it together this afternoon, that's why.
Okay, but I understand, and but we were here tonight.
I mean, really, it seemed important to me, before the council had a work session on a resolution that we'd be passing next week, it seemed important that I submit any changes that I wanted. So tonight was my deadline.
Okay, and I guess all I'm saying is, this is the first time we're seeing it, that's all.
Yeah, I'm happy to get your feedback on it. I, I did distribute it to the council, so they wouldn't be surprised when it showed up on the, on the dais tonight. I will be talking with Dr. Stewart about it as well.
Great, great. I, I guess I didn't have, I didn't have time to digest it, really, that's all. That's, that's why when we're trying to compare them, it's difficult.
Yeah, my, my suggestion is that the council not try and sort of write the resolution, that I think that we can rely on the goodwill of all the parties to come up with something that's agreeable to everybody.
I agree.
I mean, that would certainly be far easier. Believe me, Colleen, we've tried to write resolutions.
Well, I'm not, I'm not looking to read it, I just want to understand it before it comes back. I just wanted to ask him particularly, but it sounds like he hasn't really read it or digested it, so he can't really answer that question.
I think perhaps, with the exception of Councilmember Austin Lane, that the college's position in the next few years may not be clear to all of you. That's my fault. The mayor and I have been talking about me delivering a state of the campus address, but with the elections this fall, we didn't think that that was the right time. And now the advocacy that we need to do in Annapolis, you know, I'm hoping to get here sometime later this spring.
And I did make that commitment, and we will do it.
Well, what's going on here actually is that we have a facilities' master plan in place from 2002 to 2012. We are due to update that plan. The McNAC Committee has taken a look at that and identified one big concern, that the renovation of our two science buildings, or the demolition of those and the replacement of them with a building, in order to fit the number of labs we need into that, to fit the program into that building, it might need to be taller than the current four stories that it is now. And that is a concern to the McNAC folks, and to Councilmember Austin Lane's constituents in the particular area. There is no, other than, there is one line in one paragraph saying we might have to go up. That's all that's in there. Now, they've identified what they believe is a better solution to the problem, that involves the storage facilities on Fenton Street, that are on either side of our garage. And we are currently having that conversation with them. That conversation has all kinds of very interesting permutations. For example, our master plan doesn't ever have any mention of either of those on there, and can't, and steering a college master plan is like steering an ocean liner. We can't just around and go in that direction, because it has implications not only for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, but for the Rockville Campus and the Germantown Campus as well, because we have to stack projects for all three campuses into this facilities' master plan and time them very tightly. For example, we are, this summer, will be doing six different capital and renovation projects at the same time, just on the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. And so we think that this is an interesting idea, and there'll be a chance when we get to update our facilities' master plan, which will happen sometime later this spring or early summer, to contemplate the storage facilities' ideas. We don't know if they're for sale. We don't know if they're too close to the railroad tracks and the CSX trains to put a laboratory, put laboratories in there. We know one of them has an HVAC system, we don't know if it's adequate. We know the other one doesn't have one at all. And the college, Lorraine met with my boss, along with Jim Evans from the neighborhood, and we've agreed to investigate all of these things. So there are actually facility staff working on that already. And so I know this resolution, seen it, and the college is, and chaired it with my superiors and stuff like this, and the college likes this one. And I haven't seen, had a chance to look at this one very much, and so that's what I've been saying here tonight. But there's a whole bigger picture here, and I apologize for not briefing you on that bigger picture before, but this is the one that we think works for us at the present time. I'll have to take a look at this one and see if it's workable.
Okay, thank you.
I, if I could just add, I don't, I don't think your folks are going to like the second one. You know, I think there's a lot of unnecessarily negative language in here. Again, the emphasis is wrong, and it's extremely vague. There are words in here, like reasonable and appropriate. I'm not sure I know how we would interpret some of this.
Well, let's, let's give you some time to, to work those kinds of things out.
Yeah, it just.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I would just like to ask my colleague, Ms. Austin Lane, if.
I would just like to ask my colleague, Ms. Austin Lane, if there's anything that you need from this council beyond this, you know, tonight, to continue this, then I would just say bring it back when it's ready.
Okay. Are there other questions from the council? Okay. Well, it is scheduled for next week. I very much appreciate everybody's participation, and I hope we can come up with a single resolution for next week. And we appreciate, and I will, you know, get you scheduled for a larger briefing. As you, as I know you know, we've been dealing with a lot, a number of very large issues and it's taken up a great deal of our time, and we're actually moving very shortly to one of those, so. But thank you for coming and thank you for your comments and thoughts on this process, and I do look forward to continuing to work with you on some of these issues.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is our legislative report. And as everyone knows, the, the state legislature is in full session, and Suzanne will be giving us frequent reports because things change up there on an almost daily basis.
Good evening. Well, this, this week, I, I know a little bit more about the legislative items, so I'm, I'm happy to be able to speak with you. Since last week, I testified on Thursday, the 15th, about condominium legislation. Today also on the same topic. Last Thursday, it was with the House and working with Sheila Hickson's aide Teddy Shulman, and today it was with Senator Jamie Raskin. Also, recently, the mayor spoke on behalf of the city and MML for the municipal aggregation, electrical aggregation legislation, and I heard today that was very effective. The, today also, there was a hearing that we had submitted testimony on, a copy of last year's resolution on the mercury switch in vehicles issue. I wish to testify, along with Catherine Tunis and others, on this. After an hour and a half of listening to global warming discussion, I decided to come on back. The timing of the, of the hearing was such that it was after a very interesting discussion, but lengthy discussion, on steps that the state legislature might take to help combat global warming. And so, I will be testifying tomorrow on behalf of the mercury switch legislation with the House. I did leave the testimony from the city with the legislation. The, two other items tomorrow are death penalty bills. Both the House and the Senate are taking up the abolition of the death penalty in Maryland tomorrow, and Senator Raskin in particular is interested in, in this issue. All of our delegates have come, have co-sponsored this legislation. We have the testimony, we have the resolution from last year that we passed, and so I have a cover letter with that, also referencing the city council's position from 1994. So, there's a long history of the city's position on the death penalty. Other issues that are coming up that are MML related, there's been a number of bills related to funding of police. And one of the items from our state funding is that currently, we get $1,800 per officer as part of a payment to help, to help fund law enforcement in our community, as do all the other municipalities. There's a proposal to raise that to, I think, $2,500 plus the cost of living, kind of an annual cost of living inflationary factor, which the MML is supporting as one of its priorities. There's the municipal ownership of streetlights bill, which is coming up and which we'll testify on. And as I mentioned, there was the electrical energy aggregation bill, which you spoke, I believe, before the Senate, but there's still the House hearing has not yet been In going to the, going to Annapolis last Thursday and again today, I've had an opportunity to spend some time talking with some of our officials. And I did spend a good amount of time talking with Teddy Shulman, who's an aide to Sheila Hickson. And she was mentioning the issues that we've raised with her and, and Delegate Hickson before, such as some of the bills related to, out of the TASI report, raising our proportion of income tax revenue that we receive, and also the third-party arbitration bills. We have not submitted these bills this year. Partly that's because I've been swamped on gym issues and have not been proactive in getting that. However, in those discussions, I know the mayor's spoken with, with Ms. Hick, with Delegate Hickson and others, and I've spoken with them. They're, they've had conversations back with the legislative staff from Montgomery County, kind of asking more information about this. And at least Teddy Shulman's general interest is, is in trying to see what the outcome will be of this joint task force, the task force on tax duplication. I'm not sure the direction the council wants to give me on this, but I, I did understand the point, that they'd kind of like to see where the working relationship can be between the municipalities in Montgomery County before they take this on as a statewide issue. Not really knowing how it would come out. So, that's, I'm just kind of laying that out. I'm not really sure the, the next step to take on that. I have been encouraged that the county has moved pretty quickly about establishing a joint task force, and I know that this Thursday night, the Montgomery County MML chapter will be meeting with the county executive. And so, I'm just kind of laying that out, but I, I don't quite know if there's a step that I should be taking on.
I, I can, I can fill you in a little bit because I did have some discussions with Delegate Hickson and her staff about this issue. And I think, as you said, I think that at this point, there's a little bit of, knowing that the process, the discussion between the municipalities and the county are beginning, I think there was, as you said, a little bit of reluctance to get out ahead of that. Delegate Hickson is supportive of what we're trying to do. I believe she's seeing the discussions between the municipalities and the county as sort of being the first step. And then, once that's sort of established, you know, sort of where we're going, I think she would be very happy to introduce legislation that would extend the, the issues and the discussion to the state level. I should also say that within MML, MML has formed a subgroup of their legislative committee that deals with municipal revenues. I have had a discussion with the chair of that committee. They are interested in this issue. Because it's a, because it's a statewide group, because MML is a statewide group, there is concern on the, on the part of the municipalities. Montgomery County, the municipalities in Montgomery County are in a situation where the county is required by state law to provide a rebate. It doesn't say how much, but they are required. Some of the municipalities in Maryland actually are located in counties where there's not even a requirement that the county provide a rebate. And some of those municipalities would like for that issue, the requirement that the county provide them with a rebate, to be on the table also. And so, from, once we go statewide with this, it's going to, it's going to pull in a number of other issues. And so, I think we need to get our feet under us first. I mean, we can go ahead and ask that those bills be put in, but I think, assuming we have a good discussion with the county executive, I think we will come in stronger than we would if we were having to deal with this wide variety of statewide issues without having that agreement between the municipalities and the county in Montgomery County. Does that make sense to people?
If I can mention a little bit, just kind of about the, the way that the process goes for these bills. When there's a, a bill that's up for one of these hearings, there's kind of the, the usual suspects put in their testimony. Montgomery County's legislative office puts in their standard sheet that lists what the county's position on is. This would be one where they would say, gee, we're talking about that, we'd like to see where the discussion comes out. And that's an easy thing then for legislators to say, okay, well, let's, let's not act on it. So, I, I mean, I would anticipate that that would be, you know, the, the sheet that would be put out by Montgomery County on this issue.
And, and our delegates, Delegate Hickson and the other delegates that I've spoken to have been very supportive on this, but they represent us and I, I, I wouldn't hazard a guess, I haven't spoken to everybody, but I wouldn't hazard a guess as to where the entire Montgomery County delegation would come out on this, given that I don't know that they've heard as strongly from their municipalities as our folks have from us. So, I guess what I'm saying is I think we, I think the, the priority for right now ought to be coming up with a clear understanding between the municipalities, Montgomery County and the county executive. And then, I think, once we've got that and maybe part of that agreement can be some support from the county executive for some of the other things we're trying to do. Colleen?
Could we push for the arbitration component without having to cope with all the other issues? Is that something that we could have now?
We, we can put in whatever we like. We can ask to have it put in. The first, if, if something, if something affects municipalities in general, the first entity they will go to will be MML. And I, I have no reason to think MML wouldn't support that kind of thing. But what the, some of the municipalities who are in the, in the Shaw counties, they call them, the Shaw counties and the, the Shaw counties and the May counties, some of the municipalities in the May counties will probably turn to their legislators and say, we want to deal with this other thing first. And I don't think we want to get into that kind of a competition with our allies. Just, I'm, I'm talking strategy here, not substance. If people sort of see what I'm saying. So, I guess my, my recommendation to the council would be that we, we've got a, we've got a wonderful opportunity that was helped along by the TASI report and also by the discussions that some members of the council and some members of the TASI committee had with Ike Leggett when he was a candidate, and he has been extremely good about keeping to his agreements, and I'm, I'm very hopeful that we can make some progress. And that's, my recommendation to the council would be, that's where we put our efforts right now.
I certainly, when I speak with legislators, I do discuss these items, so that they're aware of our position.
And I think it's helpful to lay the groundwork now so that people are aware of kind of why the issues come at them and the orders that they come, and it also gives us the opportunity to be able to support our colleagues with their issues so that they're ready to support us and we can be successful.
Right.
And in fact, even I think the, the raising of the issue with Delegate Hickson's office and their subsequent phone calls to the county, let's just say county's offices, I think, put extra pressure on them to, to make sure that this comes about quickly.
And also, MML is actively dealing with it. I mean, that's, that's how I know what the other municipalities are concerned about is because this has come up before the legislative committee and also in conversations, one-on-one conversations that I've had with the current president of MML and also the chair of the legislative committee.
One of the things that, in my discussions with our legislators and in particular today with Senator Raskin, is concern about money. The state legislature, the hierarchy, from what I'm hearing in the state legislature, has indicated that, that they feel the money's very, very tight this year and that they know that the, that it'll be more difficult next year, but they're trying to think about what steps should they take this year. It sounds like they haven't decided how they would deal with that. They're, I think there's discussions about maybe they'll do a retreat or maybe they'll do some other kinds of activities to try to think of a strategy for how to deal with that. It's not been decided yet, but I do want to let you know that that is the kind of the topic that's going on in, in Annapolis right now. And we had heard that before, related to Montgomery College's request, recognizing that they needed funds. Certainly, it's an issue with our request for a bond bill for the gymnasium, as with all the other bond bills that have been submitted. One of the things that I do need to do, I haven't done yet, but I need to submit by tomorrow, our bond bill fact sheet. And I have prepared a draft of it. The formatting is, is such a trip, in terms of what gets sent to us, so you've got kind of a rough draft there. But essentially, I did what I prepared last year, which is looking at this as, the gymnasium is phase three of the full community center project, so that the full amount of money's already spent on the community center, and to be spent on the community center, if you were to build a gym, is included in the total price. Of that amount, you must show the full amount of the bond bill request as the request for the state, which is $3 million, and then the, the various funds must add up. What I did in terms of the draft before you is essentially assume a total of $6.6 million for a gym. $600,000 for design work, $6 million for construction. The proposal that we had submitted last year had half that, $300,000 for design, $3 million for construction, and I added, I doubled that essentially into, into the amount that's shown before you.
Can you just clarify from the sheet you gave us? It, it says design, so 1.8 million would be the 600,000 plus 1.2 million that's already been spent?
That's correct.
And then, the, uh, going down to item 18, in 2001, 2000, 1999, was it 500,000 each year?
Yes, we had 500,000 in '99, 2000, 2001.
Okay.
The, the way that the form is done, you can't extend the line.
Sure. Now, the only thing that gives me pause is in 13. I, I think it's important that what the city of Tacoma Park has already committed is a very large sum of money, especially given our budget. And then, I'm uncomfortable with the proposal that the city commit to the 2.4 million. I'd be much more comfortable if the state of Maryland request was matched by Montgomery County request.
The, that's fine, but that's a decision the council has to do in terms of what it requires, what it decides to do by Montgomery County.
So, i- if this does go forward to the state tomorrow, I, I would be more comfortable, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would be more comfortable if we could change that Montgomery County line to 3 million and then make sure that we brief them on how that would...
What, what, for those who don't have this before them, let, let me describe what's here. This is a section of the form that says funding sources for the gym. Of this, it includes the amount that's already been spent on the community center. Of that, City of Tacoma Park has already committed and spent $6.6 million. Montgomery County, $2.35 million. State of Maryland, just over $3 million. There was a quarter of a million dollar federal grant, and so those are, those are funds that have already been committed and spent. The $3 million that's the bond bill is identified as requested from the state of Maryland. The item that Councilmember Austin Lane's referring to is requested from Montgomery County, $360,000. That's the amount of the supplemental request that is still pending before the county council, and that's why I included that at that amount. Then, the remainder of the funds, the pledge from Washington University Hospital of 750,000, and the difference between the total cost that has to show up on this form of $18.8 million...
For, for all three phases.
For all three phases, leaves $2.4 million needing to be made up from somewhere, and so it's listed as City of Tacoma Park proposed. I certainly understand your, your interest in identifying different source or larger source from Montgomery County. I just operated with what I knew was out there right now.
And, and actually, we formally made a request for 360. We haven't actually made a request for any additional funding at this point.
No, what about the federal funding? I know that that process is underway right now. Will we go forward with any requests to them?
Well, and that's, and that's a question also for the council. It's awfully difficult to identify this as an economic development project, which has been the traditional thing. We've always put something in, but we haven't received funds for that. We can submit that. The amount that you want to submit for would be, you know, some direction that I would move.
I don't remember what we submitted last year, but I do remember submitting that form with you.
Right.
Was it a million dollars?
Half a little bit, right? I'm not remembering off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be reasonable. That was something that was vetted through the liaison committee at the time that we did it.
Have we put in a request for this here?
No, that's the, that's the, it needs to go in, it needs to go within about the next week and a half. week and a half or so.
I mean, my, my main point is that putting something on paper, proposing city of Tacoma Park's additional commitment is something I'm not comfortable doing. I, I do think that if the gym were to be funded, you know, at $3 million by the state and $3 million by the county, we would be well on our way to being able to afford the gym, even in the very expensive proposals that we reviewed recently. Since that hasn't really been the perception of the community, they are concerned that we couldn't raise that money. And I would like to see if we could raise that money from state, county, and federal. And, and then, you know, bring that to the table along with the question of, "Do you want a gym?"
That's fair. The, as I mentioned last week, this is, in some respects, a fiction that you have to put together for this process. That, that how this, how these items are identified is often not how the projects, in fact, I don't know if ever is the way the projects actually go through. First of all, you almost never get the full amount that you request from the state of Maryland. So, so part of this is, you know, it's, it's information that goes with the bond bill request, but there's kind of an understanding that, that there's some fudge to these numbers. I certainly appreciate your concern. I understand that very strongly. But I, it is also something I need to submit. They said early this week, and gee, it's Tuesday night, so it's not like I need to get it in.
If, if we do intend to make a federal request, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable saying we make a request, changing the amount we've requested from Montgomery County, because we only have, we have on record a request from Montgomery County. But if the intention is to request additional federal funding, I don't think that that would, I don't think that that would be a problem to put that in there. I will tell my colleagues that, having dealt with this before, putting down that there would be a commitment from the city of Tacoma Park would increase the chances that we would get state funding. I mean, this is a bit of a chicken and an egg problem. On the one hand, we don't want to get too far ahead of the decision we're making. On the other hand, I have heard very clearly from people that they're concerned about the money commitment, and they would be happier the more additional funding we get. But you won't get more additional funding unless you, unless you propose more additional funding from the state. And so it, if, if we're going to maintain an option to have a large amount, to, to request a large amount of state funding, we have to show that the city and other entities that we're going to are going to make a commitment.
Well, and to be clarified, this does...
And if we've got the state funding, we can do then whatever we want.
And to, and to be clarified, this, this does not make a commitment. This simply says proposed.
Right.
One of the things that I have done for two different reasons, in putting the entire community center budget into this component, is to make it clear how much the city's contributed to this project, which is by far the largest component of this amount of funds. So one of the things that, you know, one of the reasons I have that in here is that it shows that we, we have in the past, you know, put in the large share of the funds for this facility. The second thing is that it's not tied specifically to the gym, although clearly that has been the indication that we're talking about phase three in here. Because if some of the funds that we do get from the state of Maryland, if we get some, might go to some of the facade that's not exactly attached to the gym, we don't want to have that kind of collateral question. We want to make sure that we're able to, to use it as is appropriate with the facility.
Why don't, why don't we cut it down the middle? Why don't we say that there, some of that money, move that, some of that into a request? Because I think you are making a request for federal funding. But leave some of it in terms of Tacoma Park proposed. We, we won't get, we won't get the 3 million.
I think the funding fiction is the $18 million total. So there's already built-in...
Yes, absolutely.
...estimates here. And if we can show, you know, that we're requesting a sizable amount from the county, from the federal government, then the state of Maryland will, you know, see where their role is. The city of Tacoma Park will probably be called on to make up any difference between the 18 million and whatever the actual cost of a gym would be if it's decided to, to build one.
Yes. So to be clear, the 18.8 here is what we've spent on this project already, plus 6.6 for a gym.
Right. And there weren't too many options that were desirable for 6.6 that we looked at during the feasibility phase.
One of the things that you may choose to do, I think it's useful to keep the 360 from Montgomery County listed as an individual item, because that's the item that's before you, before them, is if there is a proposal to go forward in the next budget cycle with a request to the county, that's also something that could be identified.
Teri?
Did you want to go, please? You're the senior council member.
And Suzanne, what would be the timing if we decided to withdraw the request? Do we, or does it change depending upon the submittal with...
No. The, the unofficial word that I have heard is that bond bill hearings will be March 10. And so if we wish...
And is that, do they tend to do them on a Saturday? Is that usually...
They're usually done on a Saturday. That's quite a production.
Yes.
Many of you have gone through that, and you know.
It's a cataclysm.
Yes. There's nothing about submitting this, we can withdraw it, we can change it later, but it's part of the process that, you know, I've got calls from the legislative aides comp, and I don't see that your bond bill's been submitted yet.
Yeah, you have to get, you have to get the paperwork in if you're going to make a request. Teri?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I feel, I, last week I raised the question whether we're moving ahead too quickly without having our plans well in order. I feel more uneasy about it tonight. I want us to succeed. I want us to, as I said last week, I'd like to see a gem here, but I want to make sure that, that we do it in a way that, that has the community support if it's there, and it recognizes, and that we don't do it if, if the community support isn't there. And my concern is that by continuing to push ahead and request this funding at this point in time, we give a segment of the community the feeling that we're not paying any attention to them. And at the same time, if, if we change our mind and withdraw this request too much after tonight, that we're putting our legislators in a bad position, because they're already twisting arms and, and trying to, to get money from their colleagues and make deals, that then we're going to pull a rug out from underneath them and take away one part of the deal when they've already committed to other, some of their colleagues for some trade-off. And that, I worry, could jeopardize our future requests when we're more organized and have our plans better prepared. So I, again, I'm really, really, I really, really question whether now is the right time to move ahead with this request, or whether we should have better, be better organized and prepared ourselves on this project and have a better sense of the, of the community support or lack thereof before we, before we push ahead. And I want you to know that this, I find terribly difficult to say as the representative of a ward that probably plans to benefit the most from the gym because of the, our proximity to the location where the gym is going to be built. Notice that was a positive way I said that, not by accident. And it, and also the, an area of, of the city whose residents are the least concerned about the moving ahead with the gym right now. But I really, I really fear that we're jeopardizing the successful completion of this project by moving forward at this time.
Can I just answer that? Because I think that there's a real dilemma that the council, there's sort of a sense going on among some members of the council, that we're in some kind of unique position this year, and if we just wait, we'll be in a different position next year. We will always be in the position that we're in right now. The, the problem is, if we want to go forward, I mean, we can compile the information that we have already, and I think we should do that, and I think we should organize it and present it to people in a way that makes more sense to them. But the problem is always going to be that people are going to want to know how much it's going to cost us. We don't know that until we know how much we can get from the state and from the county. We won't get anything from the state unless we ask them for something. And the, the problem that we're always going to have is we can't tell anybody how much anything's going to cost until we know how much the state's going to give us, and we can't ask for something from, from the state without putting some numbers on a piece of paper. So there's nothing unique about this year, except in future years, we're less likely to get anything. But there's nothing unique about the position that we're in right now. We will always, at the beginning of the legislative session, be in the same position of not knowing how to put something on paper, because we don't know how much we want to commit until we know how much the state's going to give us. We'll always be in that position. But the problem that I have is, down the road, if we decide to get additional information, if we decide to go forward and get more, do more studies on the gym and get, because the only way we're going to get additional information is to spend more money to get it. I don't know what we're going to say to people when they say, "Well, how much state money do we have? Well, we don't have any state money. Why didn't you ask the state for any money?" "Well, we just, we didn't want to ask the state for any money because we didn't feel like we were organized enough." I think we have, if we are to go out to our constituents and tell them, "We made every effort we could to raise as much money from the other levels of government as we can." We can't say, "Oh, we passed up all these, all these opportunities to ask for money because we didn't feel ready to go." I think you, what we've done in all the years past is we've just made the request. We've gone ahead and made the request, and even if we don't get everything we asked for, and I can virtually guarantee you, we won't get everything we asked for. Unless we ask for something, we're not going to get any state funding. And the same thing's true at the county level. If we withdraw the request, I guarantee you, we won't get anything.
Right.
And so we have to make that request if we're going to do our duty to raise as much money from outside sources as we can. And we can always give the money back. I assure you, nobody at the state will be upset if we say, "Our community decided they didn't want a gym, so we're giving the money back, or we're, we're asking for your permission to use it for another source." But if we don't go forward with the money, we will not be keeping that option open. We will have to say to people, "Well, we've determined that, after spending some additional money, that yes, indeed, it would cost X. And no, we gave up the opportunity to ask for state money, and no, we gave up the opportunity to ask for county money, but we think we can do it in the future, and maybe we'll get it, and maybe we won't. So we can't actually tell you how much it'll cost you, because we don't have any other funding in the pot right now." If we're going to, if we're going to maintain people's confidence that we will be as aggressive as we can in asking for money from other levels of government, we have to go forward with this request.
I, I agree with you, Mayor Porter, that it's a difference of opinion, and it's a difference, a philosophical difference in the way that we view approaching this project. I'm not suggesting that we just publish information to try to sell the community on the gym. I'm suggesting that we need to do more detailed planning, and that we need to have that planning in place before we go out and start asking people to support the gym, and before we go out and ask our state legislators to start funding the gym. And my feeling is that, yes, we can move ahead now. I think it is, at this point, more likely to lead to failure than to success.
You'll, you'll never succeed if you don't ask.
The thing I'd like to add at this point is that I think one difference from what we've faced in the past is the specificity of the questions that the county council has asked, and I think they've made it clear that until we can come up with more solid numbers and less of a funding fiction, they're not going to do anything.
But you know how you would get more solid numbers, is to spend more money. Are you prepared to spend more money right now to get those answers?
No.
Well, then you're not going to get them. I mean, we're caught on the horns of a dilemma right now. If you, if you're, if you're prepared to do anything other than throw up your arms and say, "Oh, no, can't possibly do it ever," then we've got to go ahead and do what we can to get as much money from the state and as much money from the county as we can.
You can create alternatives. It doesn't mean they're the only ones.
Comment and a question. The recreation tax that we pay every year could pay for a lot of bond dollars. And also, there's a lot more money than we're even asking for the county from this year, which I personally think is a really, a small amount of money, considering what we pay them and how much we provide to county residents who aren't city residents, who are here because they're here, and the schools. That's my comment. Here's my question for you. Let's say the state gives us a million dollars. And we do the processing for the gym, put a referendum on the ballot, we'll say, "Absolutely not." And it's clear that the community consensus sticks for no gym. And what I'm facing right now is that, you're getting the comments too, so you know what's happening in my, in my ward. But I'm also really aware that that wasn't what happened when I campaigned, and I know that there are, you know, particular elements about this snapshot in time, I think, that are generating some of the response that we get. So let's say that we ask for the money, they give us a million dollars, and it turns out that it's a, it's a no-go for, for everybody. Could we use that money to improve the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center? No?
But we could use it for the facade, like to...
We are likely to be able to use it to complete this building. And one of the things that's important, I think, is that if we don't go forward with a gym, there's still, has been expressed desire for other work to kind of...
Sure.
...complete the edges of this building. But this is very specifically targeted, these funds, the, the bond bill funds are very specifically targeted to the Tacoma Park Community Center here. They are not for another gym that the city owns, or another recreational facility that the city owns. One of the things that I would like to mention is that, as I've indicated, I have combined the, the funds for what we've already spent on this building with a proposed gym. As the years go forward, we're not going to be able to do that. We would have to pretty much call the gym out, I think, as a spec, as a specified project, without kind of giving ourselves the credit for what we've spent so far on the building. So I think we may have another year where we could combine this as a phase three project as the years get further out. That makes it, it's a little bit harder sell to, to do that.
I, I don't think that after this year, there will be any year where we can even request a $3 million grant. I, I would be happy putting some of it in a request for a federal grant. I'm, I'm uncomfortable, I'm just thinking about the strategy with the county. I'm uncomfortable putting it in the county column, just because that signals to the county that, in spite of the fact that they have asked us for additional information before they move forward, we're going ahead and putting on paper that we're asking them to, we're going to be requesting for additional money. And I just, the, the strategic part of that just doesn't feel right to me. But...
But you are comfortable with the county's federal grant...
So as long as, as long as we actually do intend to ask it for the best, and I think that we made a request...
That's fine.
For what, what was it last year?
That's, I don't remember.
Like a million dollars or something?
It was some round amount that we knew, you know, we needed in excess of to, to build the gym. So it, it really was just a foot in the door kind of amount. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with the mayor's proposal, changing city of Tacoma Park to federal grant.
But I mean, if we can support it, if we actually are going to make a request for that amount, and, and...
If I can just add one comment, that if, if we were to go forward with this request and, under the scenario that was talked about a minute ago, get a million dollars, and then, because it's been broadly worded, use it for completing some other part of this building, I think we would have... building, I think we would have completely shot ourselves in the foot. I think we would have said, you know, we, we went forward saying that this is really about a gym, and then not use it for a gym, people would never believe us on anything.
I'll tell you the truth, I mean, as long as we use it for this building, I don't think that people would, people would care. I mean, I'm not, I'm talking about our legislators.
Yeah, but our residents would care.
Right. But, I mean, we're, we're getting so far ahead of ourselves. I'm just saying, I think we need to put whatever numbers we need to put together. I think we need to make, we need to do what we need to do to make the request. Otherwise, we can't say to people, "We have done everything we can do to try and get the federal fund, uh, the, the state funding." I don't want to go to people later, and they say, "Well, okay, we'd be interested in the gym, but how come our part of the gym is so much?" We say, "Well, we gave up the opportunity to ask for any state funding. Why did you do that? We didn't feel good that day."
I feel comfortable, you know, moving forward in the speculative way that the mayor has pointed out. I would like, though, to add another suggestion to the mix, and that is, that for part of the amount that the city is proposing, it take responsibility for, that some of those funds would come in the form of private sector or foundation money. I'm not going to say what percentage, but I think the effort should be made. Somehow paralysis has set in with respect to the effort to tap these sources. And I know the sources exist. I know, for example, the Tigerwood Foundation provides money for youth sporting activities and programs. The only thing that it does not fund is golfing activities. But, but I would think
No golf in the gym.
There can't be golf in a gym.
I think we have a lot of room for it.
There's also, you know, some fairly deep pockets around here that we've talked to in the past. Maybe some efforts were made more than a year ago, several years ago, but this was before the community center was finished, and before we had this scheme to build the gym with these various components. So I think, even though it might require some expenditure funds on the part of the city for, for example, a part-time grant rider, or whatever may be necessary, the Tacoma Foundation has expressed interest in the past in, in a more robust effort to generate these monies. I think that, given the lead time we have between now and next November, if something goes on the ballot, that ought to be enough time to submit grants, proposals, and get an idea of how much we might be able to expect. So I'd certainly like to see us ramp that effort back up again, if it was ever ramped up in the, in the beginning.
I think that's a good idea. I, I think that's a good idea, and I think if we, if we use that and the increase, the request for increased federal funding, I think perhaps we can eliminate this problem. Thank you, Doug. I think that's a good suggestion. Can we do that? Can we put in something comparable to what we asked for the feds from last year, and then use the rest in a proposed private sources?
I will see if that's, certainly from our personal effort, yes. In terms of, of how this works, I have to look through the, the rules on this. It's the...
Well, the Washington Venice Hospital is a private source.
Yes, but they have actively already pledged those funds. It's, it's a little harder to say, "And we hope to gain X number of dollars from unspecified sources," and I, I just need to look in, and look at the instructions to see if that's a possibility. But certainly in terms of the effort, in terms of the real fundraising for the project, that's something we need to do.
I think that the concern that the members of the council have is that we not put down on paper a proposal that has City of Tacoma Park attached to it when the council has not made a commitment to actually commit to that amount of money. And I do understand that concern. I don't think that that concern, however, ought to keep us from going forward with the request. And I think if we increase the amount for the federal amount, and then if we put something in for, you know, foundations or something, I think we could make it, I mean, we know that the total is going to be bigger than we'll actually have to match from some source anyway, because we know we won't get the $3 million. So I think if we come up with something that reasonably, reasonably explains the kinds of places we're going to go for funding, I think we'll be okay. And I'm a little bit concerned, I am very concerned about putting in a higher number for Montgomery County, because we actually have made a specific proposal to them, and I think we should keep that number where it is. But I, but I think that if the other, with the other members of the council, if we can make that work, go forward with that. In other words, we take the, the amount that is listed under City of Tacoma Park Propose, and we put a portion of it that would be reasonable, what we'd ask the feds, we would put in the federal column, and then the rest of it would be in, in private or foundation funding. Would that be agreeable?
Say that one again.
That the, that the money, that the amount of money that's under City of Tacoma Park Propose, that we remove that line, and that we take part of that and put it under a federal request, comparable to what we requested last year, and the rest of it go under private, private fundraising and foundation grants. I mean, I don't know what else you're going to do with it. I mean, the numbers have to add. That's the, that's the one sort of thing we can't get around. The numbers do have to add up. Is the council comfortable with doing that? Okay, are you okay with that? Okay, I think we have four votes to go ahead and do that. So we'll, we'll take the, we take the City of Tacoma Park Propose line out and divide it between the private. And if it turns out that we can't do that, let us know, and we'll beat it to death some more. I mean, I think people, even though it's fairly late, I would like to take a break before we take up the next item.
Okay. If I might just, I just also, I realize that I did forget to say that tomorrow is Housing Day in Annapolis. Linda Walker and I will be going up early in the morning for a special event that helps legislators focus on affordable housing issues in Annapolis.
And we have our condominium bills in.
That's right.
Thank you, Mayor Porter, and I just wanted to brief you on my legislative adventures. I went to Annapolis today as the chair of the Montgomery County Community Action Board, and testified in support of House Bill 430, which is the living wage for state contracts.
And if I can add, Suzanne, that this format is very helpful, and the, these updates, I think we're getting our ability to make progress in Annapolis much improved by the, the coordination of the effort, and I know it involves tying in with MML and a lot of other people on this, and having, having you as a point person, I think really improves our chances for a lot of things.
Thank you.
I'd like the, the effort to quantify this, and I'm assuming that we're going to, as the legislature is in session, get up further updates with, maybe if I can suggest that we get, that you don't just delete things off of here because something happened, but we track it through so that the
Sure.
So that the database grows rather than stays the same size.
Well, and there's more that needs to be in here. If there's a particular area of, of interest that I haven't been focusing on, please, I, I know that some of the police funding issues are not completely covered here. If there are other issues that people wish to add in, let me know, and I'll make sure that you're kept informed.
And it may be that we can kind of do a corollary piece to this for any of the county efforts that we're making as well.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Suzanne, and I, I know you're spending a lot of your days in Annapolis this, this time of year, and I appreciate it.
You like the drive.
Oh, yeah.
Suzanne is so, is so scenic. Thank you. Council will be back after a short break.
Give our appreciation to your staff for waiting this long. And then I would...
This is a product of the suggestion of Dr. Barr regarding giving notice of rent stabilization and some practical experience by our office and the housing office. It's became, it's become clear that a lot of landlords who purchase properties and they're selling properties aren't aware of the tenant opportunity, the purchase law, the rent stabilization law, and aren't necessarily fully informed about the condition of their property. And that leads to landlords with financial problems and who are unable to maintain their buildings, who impose improper rent increases on their tenants. So this is a notice requirement that goes along with the sale of rental properties that hopefully will eliminate some of those problems for new landlords and for their tenants. The, what it does is it gives the purchasers the right to rescind their contract or the opportunity, avoid entering into a contract upon learning of the different laws. And it specifically requires that the annual rent reports for the last two years be provided to them so they can see exactly what revenue they can expect from the property. I think that's much more valuable than just having a notice that there is rent control. You know, when they see what they're going to be able to take in, they'll understand whether they can afford mortgage, whether they can afford to maintain the property.
And I also would call the council's attention to the wording of the notice, which is on pages four and five, which covers a number of things fairly briefly, tenant opportunity to purchase rent stabilization, the rental licensing program and landlord-tenant relations, and also gives them information that they can, where they can go for additional information on this. I think that's very helpful also. So if somebody reading this, I think would get a pretty good sense of, you know, what the requirements, what the city requirements are. Ruth?
Is, is your sense that there are any situations where somebody wouldn't be able to provide this? Does there need to be any language that says something isn't available, don't have it, haven't owned it that long, didn't get it from the guy I bought it from, it's only been a rental facility for a year, there's only one year's report, anything like that that needs to go into the form that deals with those kind of contingencies?
The reality is that, I mean, we can make those accommodations. In reality, we should always have a copy of the rent stability or the annual rent reports on file.
The city...
So it's not just the city, so it's not just the responsibility of the property owner, which is, though we would encourage them to provide it if they have it available on file. The probability that a multifamily rental facility would be newly introduced into the market is fairly slim, given the amount of new construction that's going on. Frankly, we're, what is tending to happen is buildings with a number of apartments in them, they're consolidating the units and reducing the number as opposed to adding additional rental properties. There may be some exceptions when, I mean, we can address some language, but the probability of that occurring is fairly slim.
And given that slim possibility, is it worthwhile including some language that deals with that?
It would be worthwhile. The other thing that we had, Ken and I had spoken about earlier too, is in the notification requirement under landlord-tenant relations, which is point four, just to include additional language advising people that there are minimum lease terms and that there are minimum renewal terms. It tends to be one requirement that is frequently overlooked, and this would be an easy way of just at least giving people their heads around.
That's a good idea, I think.
Ruth? Yes, page two, section C. Page three, section C. Could you, could you talk a little bit about this? Because when I first read it, it sounded like if I received these documents, if I were a purchaser, proposed purchaser, and I received these documents, that I wouldn't be able to use them in my decision of whether to go ahead and buy the property or not.
That's what the...
Because it says, "Based upon the information contained in the notice rent reports or inspection What if, for example, the rent that has been charted is substantially below the maximum, as we learned in our report is the case for a significant number of units? And I then therefore decide, well, gee, I don't want to rent the place, but under this kind of language, it would be, I wouldn't be able to use that. Is that what's intended?
The, I think what's intended to do is prevent them from, prevent the purchaser from getting the information, sort of ignoring it, entering into the contract, and then deciding to get out of the contract. The, the notice, you know, the information in the notice is supposed to help them make their decision.
Okay, well, I'm just passing on the information that when I read it, that wasn't quite what was communicated.
Mark Hessel, who if any of you are familiar with, spoke with us before he left this evening, and he had some suggestions regarding the ordinance as far as adding some additional teeth to it so that it would prevent someone from getting information and then using that at the last moment to back up an agreement which has larger ramifications for the seller as well. So when we come back to you with the first, ordinance for the first reading, we'll clarify this language and address some of his concerns regarding additional teeth, if you will, to the options that are available to both seller and purchaser, or seller and purchaser.
Can I piggyback on that question for a minute? Now I'm a little bit confused. My assumption is that if you're going to purchase income-producing property, which rental property is, one of the first things you want to know is how much income does this produce? And so if somebody says, oh, you know, it's, I'm charging low rents now, but you can raise the rents, you know, you go in there and pay them and you can double the rents. And then at the end of it, the person finally gets these things and it says, oh, by the way, there's rent stabilization, this is all you can charge. They can't say, hey, wait a minute, you gave me wrong information, I based my, my purchase price on this wrong information, and now you're telling me that this isn't, that I can't, I can't raise the rents, and so therefore I don't want it anymore. Are we saying that you can't do that? This, it seems to me we can add additional requirements onto what the normal sales process is, but we shouldn't be able to say, we shouldn't be able to create a situation where somebody can hold off till the last minute and then say, hey, guess what, I didn't give you the right information, but it's too late now. I mean, I hadn't thought about that till, that's what Ruben said, but I agree, that's...
No, and that's the intent of them.
That you can't, that somebody can't change their mind when they finally get the actual numbers?
The intent is to make sure that someone who is buying rental property in Tacoma Park has all of the information they need to make an informed decision regarding the financial feasibility of the property. There were a couple of additions that Ken and I had chatted about before the meeting, which I think would address what you're talking about.
I think there's, there are two different issues. The issue that Mark had raised, I think it's a good point, is in, on page three, paragraph...
Mark Hessel, who is...
E2, where it says that the purchaser waives the right to terminate the contract when he or she goes to settlement on the transfer of the property. I think that should be, that waiver should only occur if the seller has in fact received the notice required by the statute. But that, that's a different issue than...
What, what purpose, apologies, what purpose does section C serve? If you didn't have section C on page two, what would you lose? Because it already says, "A purchaser who does not receive the notice and documents before entering into the contract for sale has the right to X," right? But presumably if you do receive them, you don't have the right to do those things. What does, what does C add to it?
The, the point of paragraph C is that this isn't intended to give, to give the purchaser the right to rescind because they don't like the information. The information is there, required to be given to them before they enter into the contract so they can make a good decision as to whether to enter into the contract.
I guess I still am not clear as to...
I, I think the implications of what you're saying is that the seller could wait until the very last minute, as Mayor Porter suggested, and then say, oh, by the way, here's a big pile of paper you have to initial. And, you know, if the purchaser doesn't happen to read it, they now have lost all this rather important information. And I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is to make this information available to the purchaser prior to them essentially entering into a contract.
That's true, I mean, we could, we could require that they get the information a certain amount of time before, before entering into the contract.
Why, why wouldn't you want a purchaser to make a decision, a prospective purchaser to make a decision as whether they want to sign a contract or not based on the information in front of them? Why would we not want that?
You do want them to make the decision based on the information, you don't want to give them the impression that they can, they can receive all this information and then enter into the contract and still, still be able to get out of it based on what they received in the notice.
I think Terry had his end of the post.
Two things, and they relate to the notice of rental housing laws. From what I, the feedback I've gotten on the rent stabilization is that, you know, new owners of buildings oftentimes will say that they didn't know we had rent stabilization, but, but many times they say they did know it, but they never realized what that meant. And so I wonder if we couldn't make this a little stronger, and I'll give you a couple of suggestions. One is that the, the second paragraph says, "The city of Tacoma Park advises prospective buyers, prospective purchasers to familiarize themselves with the city laws and regulations." And I would like to change that from advises to strongly encourages. And number two, under item number two, rent stabilization, I wonder if we couldn't add another sentence that says something like, "Purchaser may not be able to use new mortgage expenses as justification for increased rents." Because I think that's the biggest difficulty that the new owners are surprised by, is that they, they get a new mortgage to finance the property, you know, their own mortgage, and then they find out that, you know, the old mortgage is what the rents are based on, and that their new higher mortgage with higher mortgage payments may not be a foundation for increasing the rents. And I think that needs to be spelled out in that paragraph. Thank you.
Kelly? I think that's an argument for, for taking this right there. I want to say that I suggested we do this about a year ago, and I'm happy that now that the, our advisor Ken Barr has suggested it, that the city attorney is taking it seriously. When I suggested this, I also suggested that we look at how Washington DC uses their condo contingency clause in real estate sales. If you enter into a contract for a condo sale in Washington DC, you, you have to get the information about the condo rules and regulations on a particular day, and then you like have five days to remove them. And then there's a, there's a contingency removal that's built into that. Are you familiar with that, Sarah, at all?
No.
How about you, Ken?
No.
Too bad Mr. Hessel left, he probably is. I think that's something that we should consider as a structure because it builds in a time period where they have to look over the materials. I recognize that it's after the, the contract offer is made, but it's still within the rights to negotiate the price based on findings before you remove contingencies. And, and given that it's clear that the prospective purchaser is going to have a five-day period to review documents, the seller is probably much more likely to include the information before the, the contract. Commenting on what Terry had to say, it seems to me, and I'm going to say again, that I brought this issue up to the city attorney a year ago about the equity issue related to how we treat people differently based on what their mortgage value was whenever rent control happened to be instituted, and I thought it was an equality issue. And, and nobody took it seriously, and here it comes up in the Barr report, and we, and we have recommendations on it. What I, what I think about this and what it triggers in my head is that if we have a law that says that you can't, that there is no consideration of this, and I think this is what Mr. Barr is referring to when he's making commentary about the issue of the status of the, of the mortgage and the, the case law out of, I guess it's California and New Jersey around this, is that if we're saying that we're restricting a potential evaluation of that, of that value of the property after it's sold, and given the fact that rental properties are valued based on, on their rents, you're, you're capping the value of the, of the land and the, and the improvements to the land really effectively. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a surrogate for it, but you are effectively capping that value. Does that make sense to you? Do you understand what I'm saying?
But can we sort of stick with the issue that we're talking about here?
He just asked for a correction that I think speaks directly to whether or not that relates to a taking. I think that is the issue that we're talking about right there.
I mean, our, even our current, our current law does not permit increases based on, on purchased mortgage expenses. The problem with, with our law right now, as Dr. Barr pointed out, is that in deciding how to, to give hardship increases, our law considers whether or not a person has a mortgage and somebody with a, who does have a mortgage actually gets a smaller increase than someone who owns the property outright. So I don't think there's a problem with Terry's suggestion of bringing people's attention that they can't expect to get a rent increase because they paid a lot for the building, which I think is what he's getting at.
But it would affect net operating income presumably, and if, if they came with...
The, the mortgage is, is not part of operating income.
Didn't they feel like it, that it's in a different section?
If I may follow up?
Go ahead, Terry.
Thank you. I think my point was not to open up the whole discussion on the rent stabilization laws and what changes we might prefer to implement in the future, but based on the current law, I think that that's a necessary addition to this paragraph. If, if it's highlighted a problem that Councilmember Clay sees in the rent stabilization law, then we need to deal with that separately, but as long as that's the way the law works, I think we need to make that clear in here because that is, I think, the single most, the single biggest problem that I've heard from new owners of properties.
Okay, well, it seems I was wrong about the rapidity with which we could deal with this.
That was pretty fast for us.
My, I think you've heard all of the council's suggestions. This, like all of our ordinance, has to come before the council for two readings. My suggestion to the council is that the city attorney and the director of housing do the best they can with the suggestions they've received from the council, and we will have another opportunity to, to edit between first and second reading, or before first reading or whenever.
And at this point in time, we're going to work to address the concerns that you had raised, to make them clearer, and to expand somewhat on the notice of the presence of rental housing laws to sort of highlight some issues that have been raised down with more regular ease.
And did I hear you say you were going to add some language? And did I hear you say you were going to add some language that would address the concern that I raised? That's what I thought you said when I, when I talked to you.
Yes, same. Yes, in your instance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything else anyone would like to put on the table before this goes into second, second revision or first revisions of language? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so I think we've got, we will move forward with this. And as we said, I think the hour is too late for us to begin the very lengthy and important discussion of the proposed revisions for rent stabilization, so I will go ahead and reschedule that. Thank you all very much for waiting through the other discussions for this item. There's nothing else, we adjourn.